Good evening. This is the call to order for the Canal Winchester City Council Work Session for Monday, October 20th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Present.
Ms. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Busker.
Here.
Mr. McGoughlin.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, City Administrator Matt Peoples. Filling in for Development Director Lucas Hare is Andrew Moore. We have Amanda Jackson, Finance Director Bill Sims, our Construction Services Director and Law Director Thad Boggs. Thank you for being here this evening. The first item is reports of city staff. Mr. Sims. I looked up and I saw Mr. Strong.
Thank you, Ms. Amick. The Water Reclamation Headworks Project is continuing. The contractor is actively excavating now for the new Headworks building itself. We have all the other utilities relocated and, you know, some temporary things hooked up, but the plant's operating well. And so we're kind of starting in on the long haul of building that building. But the work is progressing according to schedule, so we're in good shape. Winchester Boulevard Improvements Project is continuing as well. So the roundabout pavement is complete with the exception of the surface asphalt that'll go on last before, you know, make it all look good toward the end. And the contractor is actually this week working on the median that extends from the roundabout all the way to Gender Road. So this week they're working on extending the median up to Prentice School. And then next week, we will begin going closer to Gender Road. There's kind of a division there that during this week, we have westbound traffic in the roundabout, eastbound traffic on the temporary lanes to give us a work area. Next week, in order to work in that area, we will actually shut down the Prentice School traffic signal and make that switch into right-in, right-out only for the shopping center in Prentice School Drive. And then that'll give us the opportunity to construct the rest of that median, but basically beginning next week, that will be the end of the traffic signal and the traffic pattern will change there. So all traffic east and westbound will be in the roundabout itself. And the entrance, the new entrance into Winchester Square Shopping Center by Scramblers, that will be reopened. So now folks that are leaving the shopping center by Swans, they will actually turn right, use the roundabout, and come back up to Gender Road. Same with if you're going to Prentice School from Gender, you'll head down past Prentice School, turn around the roundabout, and come back. So, you know, that'll be a bit of a change, and I'm sure it'll, you know, be a little learning curve for a few folks, but, you know, not very dissimilar to the opposite side of Winchester Boulevard, east of Gender Road. You know, you've had some limited movements there. So that's where we're at with that. And Green Gate Boulevard has been moving right along. The road is paved except for the surface at this point. Contractor is basically finishing up the sidewalk placement. The path is paved, spreading topsoil, things of that nature. And next week, they'll put the surface asphalt on, and that will leave us striping signage and the street lighting that needs to be installed. But we're actually many weeks ahead of schedule on that project. The East Waterloo Street Storm Sewer relocation, it'll be happening actually out in front of this building. The project was awarded to Danberg Incorporated. We conducted a pre-construction meeting last week for that project. Basically, work is expected to start around December 1st. We'll have a few weeks of work, and then they take a longer break for the holidays. They'll be off two weeks at that time, so we won't have any disruption during Christmas, New Year's time. Then they'll return to work and finish up in January. So I think our goal basically is to get started and, you know, before the break, be out of Waterloo Street to try to limit that disturbance. Right now, they're anticipating eight days of construction in Waterloo. And, you know, then we'll turn up the alley. So I'm looking forward to that project to get rolling. Also McGill Park Phase 2B. We opened bids on that project, and there's legislation in tonight's packet for authorization to move forward and award that project to Tucson Incorporated. That is the contractor that actually built Phase 1 of McGill Park. So, you know, we're looking forward to continuing that relationship and get Phase 2B underway. And we're also in the midst of talking about the 2026 Street Program. So actually, Mr. Spencer will be down tomorrow. We're going to be kind of pulling together the laundry list of things that we have so that we can put budgets to everything and then kind of piece it together. So there'll be more on that later this year. On the private side, really, we have callers. We've been through pre-con for that. We're just waiting for them to tell us when they're going to start work out there. The expectation was mid-October, but I don't think they've got all their ducks in order yet, so waiting on that. And from a right-of-way perspective, we don't have any large, significant right-of-way projects underway now. They're just some small, kind of service-oriented items, so. Any questions? Yes?
Mr. Sims, you said on the sewer project, you're starting the first week in December?
Yes.
So will that fall right in the middle of Story, the Christmas in the Village Story about Christmas?
So they won't.
And the parade?
We finish early. We work limited hours in Waterloo Street, so we won't be working in the midst of Christmas in the Village. For instance, yeah, we'll wrap up early that day. We actually discussed that to try to be done earlier on that Friday, and there's no work on a Saturday, so.
Thank you. Just making sure my Christmas junkie is fulfilled.
Yes.
And you're at Mr. Shea.
The Green Gate light, I mean, you guys, I drove by, and you're shocked so far ahead of the schedule. When will that light be installed, and will that road open before the light's installed or not until?
So the traffic signal is not part of our roadway project. That's actually on the developer to install the traffic signal.
Okay.
So, you know, the lighting, I guess I was referring to was street lighting, and that's still probably more like spring, late winter, before we get the poles available for that. So when we actually open the road, I guess, you know, that's really kind of a decision we still have to make at this point. I mean, it's not really servicing anything right now. So whether it makes sense to open it there without the light, you know, that's, you know, I guess that's kind of a decision to make. You know, at this point, we're, you know, we're a few weeks from Strow's are being done with, basically there, with the exception of the street lighting. You know, we may just leave it until the street lighting's in even, or longer, I would assume at this point. Just, it's a little challenging turning left out of there sometimes, certain times of the day. So it's not really servicing anything specific at this point, so. We haven't met with the Kroger Development yet to understand exactly what their schedule is. Either, you know, we know in generalities, but we haven't met with their contractors.
Yeah, I thought, when are they starting? Because I thought they were in a hurry.
Um, I think they're anxious to start. Like, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but, you know, they're interested in a grading permit. They're in the midst of engineering review currently, so that'll have, you know, maybe two more submittals for that process. But many times, we work with them to issue a grading permit so they can start mass excavation. You know, they're all about wanting to get a building pad done. So, you know, I believe they wish to have one. I don't know where we're at in that process, but that usually happens quicker than getting the rest of the plans set approved, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the other question, the McGill contract, when is that, when will that start?
So we, tonight will presumably award the projects. So it would take about 10 days to get contracts and everything in order. Typically, it's about 30 days from that point. You know, so about that same time, probably beginning of December-ish, which they should be, you know, probably the earliest they would be ready to start doing something. I think our hope was that maybe we could start getting into the earthwork initially. You know, things like storm structures are taking a long time to get, you know, but, you know, that's some stuff that could start to happen would be earthwork. You know, try to get that out of the way possibly before, you know, hard winter sets in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sims, are there any special communications planned for the Winchester Boulevard project opening, or will it just be the signage that is at the site? Is the city going to put anything out on Facebook or anything?
So, you know, at this point, we've already shifted, for instance, westbound traffic.
Right.
And it literally was moved the barrels from here to there, you know? I mean, it hasn't changed how anything operates. You know, I think next week, I mean, I have preliminary stuff out to the affected businesses in that area, you know, so notifying them because it's going to potentially affect their deliveries for, say, Prentice School Drive, for instance. You know, that'll be something a little different for how people approach that. You know, when we're ready to open that, I mean, we've certainly put something out that the roundabout is fully open both directions. I don't know that, leading up to it, there's really a lot to do with that beyond what we already have out there. I mean, we have exhibits on our website. We have some, you know, post updates as things change. We put in special exhibits about access in and out of the shopping center, in and out of Prentice School Drive. So we share all that again with all the businesses in the area as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
My expectation is it's not going to be much of a shock to anyone at this point. As much, you know, we've had some moving around, and we're actually trying, you know, consolidating things now.
Might be a fun illustration for Rattles to get involved in that somehow.
Rattles has been out there, actually.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Mr. Sims? Okay. Hearing none, let's move to requests for council action. The first item is Resolution 25-051. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to adopt and approve the cybersecurity program and designate a person responsible for said program.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Ms. Amick. With the passing of House Bill 96, which was the state's budget, the Bayno Budget, they included a section on cybersecurity with a whole host of requirements to go along with. The first of which is this resolution to get this started, to go and adopt a cybersecurity program and a person responsible for the program.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peoples? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to Resolution 25-052.
Do we want to move?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Is there a request to move full council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Bennett. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amis.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The next item is Resolution 25-052. Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution to approve the disposal of various surplus vehicles' equipment.
Thank you. Mr. Peoples?
Thank you, Ms. Amick. In the ordinance, there's, we have five pieces of equipment that we are looking to dispose of as part of the end of year 2025 and into 2026 budget process for newer vehicles that are listed on there. City Code Section 16108 requires council authorization to do so. As you can see from the list, we have the street sweeper, which is out all the time since 2007. We want to get that replaced. It's going, it's a high-ticket item. We're working on that as part of the 2026 program or budget. Same thing with the message board. The message board was originally purchased with the Diley Road widening project we did in 2006, '07. The 2011 F-550 cabin chassis, that is the truck last year that we took the stainless steel body off of and put on a new vehicle with the, that had a blown engine. And so now it's just kind of sitting there with a cabin chassis. 2012 1500 is just one of our run-around vehicles that is getting a little bit deteriorated. And then the 2015 750, we're going to look to do the same thing that we did with the 550, take the stainless steel body off of that. We're having some engine transmission issues with the, with the 2015. It's a little bit ahead of schedule than what we would like, but we've had it go into limp mode a couple times if anyone who knows anything about diesel engines and transmissions. So trying to get ahead of that.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Questions?
I have one.
Mr. Shea.
Will you be trading this in or just going to an auction?
We're looking at trade-in, auction, or scrapping. We don't know if those cabin chassis will even draw anything at an auction or at a trade, but we're going to, those three are included in the approved methods of disposal after authorization.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
And one other question. The message board, it's the same one that I see everywhere.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, we've tried to refurbish it last year, maybe, maybe a couple years ago. Some of the panels, all the fasteners inside of there, the computer systems from 2007, so it still has a wired keyboard, which we had to find a serial port that matches that rather than a USB. So it's got a little age on it.
Yeah, well, it's out in the rain, too, so.
Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to move Resolution 25-052 to full council?
So moved. Second.
Trump, bless you.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. McGoughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Ms. Amis.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, the next item is Ordinance 25-025. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Tucson Incorporated for the construction of the McGill Park Phase 2B project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Ms. Amick. As mentioned earlier, we did open bids on this project. We had, you know, a good number of bids, five for that project. Pricing came in, you know, really situated around the engineer's estimate, three and a half million, you know, a little above, a little below. So, you know, the numbers look pretty tight overall for that job. So the low bidder is Tucson Incorporated at just under $3.3 million. And Tucson has performed successfully for the city on the Phase 1 project. They do a lot of park-related work. We also have a component to this project that is a stream restoration. They also do that specific type of work as well. And we do have a structure on this project as well, which in our Phase 1 project, we did it, and, you know, they were able to perform the structure appropriately. So we asking council to, you know, move forward with Tucson for the Phase 2B project. And this is, you know, emergency legislation, basically to keep us on track with our contracting schedule for construction projects.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Hearing none, the chair will move.
I do have one. I was just trying to give everybody a chance, since I seem to be the only guy to ask questions, but I wanted to make sure. Can you remind me, Ms. Jackson, the money for this, was it in our budget this year already? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Sims, does this include the access to the water for kayaks?
No, it does not. So we, we had a put-in area, kind of built in on the portion of the park that's north of the river, where we kind of had, I think, Dog Park was kind of the idea in that area. That's where we're looking at trying to do that. The grade associated with the river there seems to probably be best suited to having some kind of access point in that location.
So we're looking at a little more time before that drop, the official drop goes in?
Yes, that's correct. You know, we haven't looked real, real hard at that at this point, you know, concentrating on the south portion of the park. I mean, you know, depending on what's decided to occur there, really, I mean, you know, it could be something that maybe is more of a temporary thing initially. It doesn't really take a whole lot, quite frankly, to get at least a put-in, you know, without maybe not a lot of amenities, but, you know, something.
A little bit of grading.
So as we were talking, the sustainability conference that we went to a few weeks ago, one of the things that they brought up was making sure that little things like that were ADA compliant, which I never would have thought of. So just something to keep in mind as we start looking towards that.
Yeah, it's not real familiar with, you know, I'm real familiar with ADA regulations in the right-of-way. I'm not sure how it works with stream access, you know? But I'm sure that's something that we look at by our designers.
It was a whole conversation.
Yeah.
You have Mr. Boggs's wheels turning.
It is a requirement, but, you know, the design professionals fortunately can draw those things up. It was not something that I would have thought of before that conversation.
Anything else? Mr. Sims, if you could, please, for the record, why is this an emergency?
For the timing of the construction schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the chair will move to, move Ordinance 25-025 to full council. Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. McGoughlin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amick.
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Amis.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Busker.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, the next item is Ordinance 25-026. Clerk, will you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance approving the final development plan for Velocity Hill Road in the planned industrial district of the Green Gates Development.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I have a brief presentation this evening to go over the project. If there are any questions as we are moving along, feel free to stop while you're focused. If not, we can wait to the end, and I will answer as many questions as I can for you guys. Hopefully, this does not die because the little battery thing is yelling at me. So for discussion this evening, the ordinance is related to the final development plan 25006, which was recommended to City Council for adoption by Planning and Zoning Commission last Monday. This request was for a proposed 200,000, 200 square foot industrial building to be located on the subject property. This subject site is the parcel directly behind Meyer, the bean field there with the house, address 7995 Hill Road. This property is owned by the family that rezoned all of the Green Gates Development, including where Meyer sits, Redwood Apartments, where Green Gate Cove, that residential project's being developed, and then including the apartment project that City Council approved recently on the opposite side of Hill Road. This is one of the last remaining properties in their possession. The applicant is looking to develop on it for industrial use. When looking at the colors on the map, everything in the dark purple is zoned for industrial with commercial as an associated use. So the, all intents and purposes, this whole area was designed to be an industrial park in 2001. Meyer came in and requested the chunk that they control be a commercial strip center. So just a little difference in kind of how that works. Properties to the north were always designed to be some sort of multiple-family housing, either apartments, detached condos, attached condos with a commercial shopping center on the corner of Diley and BC Road. So a little background from 2001 zoning on how the site was to be developed. When looking at the site plan for the project, this applicant is acquiring not only the parcel where the house is located, but also the woodland protection zone, the long skinny parcel to the north. This property acquisition encompasses the full 29.6 acres. The applicant is looking to develop one building on the entire parcel. The northern woodland area is to remain a woodland per the original zoning. It's just part of their transfer with the seller for the bean field. When looking at the site plan itself, there is one access point on Hill Road. This access drive is located within Fairfield County's right-of-way. This right-of-way is completely controlled by the county, so the traffic study is currently being reviewed by the county for any improvements necessary. In regards to access within the Canal Winchester Corporation limits, if you look just south on Hill Road, the parcel that's listed to be owned by South Central Power, the applicant is working with South Central Power Company to align their access drive in this approximate location. Now, when those plans move further along, they will construct it and provide employee access to that south side of the building, or whatever orientation we call it, the car parking area. In the meantime, the access drive with the star will be for full traffic for both semi-trucks and also automobiles. When looking at the site itself, this plan does note there's going to be an eight-foot multi-use path along Hill Road that follows the Ceta Trail Plan. The site plan does not show a sidewalk leading from that eight-foot path to any of the front office areas, so Planning and Zoning Commission did make a recommendation that an ADA path from that eight-foot trail to the front of the building be required as part of their site package. The site plan also shows a total of 201 parking stalls, which meet the minimum one parking stall per 1,000 square feet of building of the subject property. When looking at their landscape package, they've performed a tree survey showing all the existing boundaries of trees on the site. Again, the long parcels to the north is the woodland that they are going to be retaining with this project. There are a selective number of trees that are impacted primarily around where the detention base into the south of buildings going, where utility connections happening between Meyer and the back of the building, and then decorative landscaping that was planted around the house that's being demolished. The trees that are being planted, kind of flipping back and forth, you can see all little circles that pop up. They're improving the woodland that is located to the north by planting additional trees, as well as providing parking lot trees, landscape screening from Hill Road, screening to the properties to the south, as well as screening their own access drive internal to the site. And then here's a zoom in showing the landscaping that's being installed within the woodland preservation zone. When looking at their lighting plan, the applicant does note that the parking lot lights range in height to a max of 27 feet tall on a three-foot concrete base. range in height to a max of 27 feet tall on a three-foot concrete base. The divided-point overlay district requires apartment lighting to be a maximum of 30 feet tall, so Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that these plans be adjusted to be a maximum of 30 feet tall. As proposed, the maximum would be 31 feet tall. But in terms of the average lighting and maximum lighting and spillover, it met all of the overlay district requirements. When looking at the utilities for the site, the applicant is showing water will be extended from behind Meyer, so that is a public water main. They will bring that through the site and then actually cross the gas transmission line and stub it to the north for a water main extension. The water will then feed into the building, which it'll be split to the service, domestic service of the building, and also to service all the private fire hydrants that will secure the site to meet the Violet Township Fire Department's spacing and number requirements. During preliminary review with the Violet Township Fire Department, they did not have any issues with the drawings shown. They indicated they'd take a deeper dive once building permits got submitted to make sure all the spacing, the connection details inside the building were correct. When looking at sanitary sewer, there is a forest main that is proposed to be installed with this project that will be directionally bored through that woodland to a sanitary sewer manhole located on the Redwood project that easement process is being done by the applicant to gain access to connect to that manhole. There's about a 10-foot gap between the manhole and the end of the easement to the property line, so they're just working through logistics with Redwood to obtain that, to make this connection. For storm sewer, the applicant is showing three wet basins. The largest basin is within the woodland protection zone. This is in an area that currently has a barn located on it, so there are no trees in this area. Just to the south of the gas main, they're doing another small retention basin for the parking lot drainage, and then a larger basin to the south of the site for building rooftop drainage as well as parking drainage. This exhibit here just shows a little more detail for the basins with all the grading lines for you to see them a little clearer. When looking at the building elevations, this is made out of a pre-cast concrete panel system with three gray colors proposed. The building itself is a little unique from other industrial buildings around the city. If you look at the paint scheme and some of the architectural detail for the windows, everything is angled to kind of give the building a different view, as this building does sit on an angle from Hill Road. So, it'll just kind of create a different view shed from, you know, the typical paneling system. When looking at the window glass itself, the applicant has added the required window glass facing Hill Road by adding the additional storefront, as well as a recessed storefront. This building does have a notch in its front face. If you look at this kind of lower left corner of the building, so you can see that a little more apparent in the storefront system on the front elevation. High bay windows have also been added across every elevation to allow natural light in the building, and in this space designed to be up to four tenants, there are docks on the north side of the building that have the capacity to be punched out for more capacity given any need for specific tenants that want to go within that building. So, Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this application last Monday. It had been recommended to city council approval of the development plan FDP 25-006 with the following conditions: that the applicant constructs all roadway improvements on Hill Road as required by the traffic study approved by Fairfield County Engineer prior to building occupancy; that a sidewalk be added to connect the front of the building to the path within the public right-of-way; and that the parking lot light poles be no taller than 30 feet. Questions for council?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
Can you go back to the, we'll call it the first real slide? Not the, not the beginning there.
I'll tease you.
Sorry, second.
First real slide?
Sorry, second. I apologize. So, just, just a quick question here, and it's kind of hard to see, so I'm just going to stand up. So, this is the 50-yard, the 50-yard side setback, and it goes all the way around. Am I seeing the building sitting on top of the 50-yard setback here and basically here?
Yes, so the, thank you for, for the question. So, the setback requirements for this zoning district are 50 feet from the right-of-way line for the front of the building, and then 25 feet for the rear of the building to the rear property line. This building does sit right on both, the required setback limits.
And that's the setbacks in the CEDA, or the setbacks for our traditional?
This is the setbacks that were established in the 2001 zoning plan for this, this property.
I thought the CEDA had further, had larger setbacks.
So, the CEDA plan does not replace any standards within the 2001 planned district. The CEDA plan only provides additional standards when the original zoning is silent. So, since the original zoning district had the setbacks established, the CEDA overlay text does not apply. If the 2001 zoning plan did not have any setbacks, then the CEDA district would apply.
And out of curiosity, what are the setbacks on the CEDA?
50 feet for the front, 25 for the back, unless it's adjoining residential, which that 25 changes to 50.
So, same, basically.
But it's hitting, it's right at the 50, because the way it's drawn, it looks like it's over.
Correct. It's right at the 50.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. This slide is a little zoomed in. That dash line's still the same.
Okay, feel a little better.
And then my other question. So, we have no input then on any type of improvements to the road based on the fact that the county is doing the traffic study?
The roadway is located within Fairfield County, so it is not our road to improve. The South Central parcel, just to the south, is within Canal Winchester's property, but that is programmed to be a substation for South Central Power. So, this applicant has been working with them to align their access drive further north to provide a secondary access point to the site, which is highly beneficial because it'll help distribute traffic, it'll separate the employee versus truck traffic. Sure. South Central, to my knowledge, is very comfortable with this exhibit and how it will move forward, as it provides additional space for the power company to actually pull their vehicle forward and then back into the T, which is their preferred method for turning into a site. And so, this is taking some of that internal infrastructure legwork off of their site by connecting it to the adjoining property.
And at this point, there is no obligation for them to commit funding to the future intersection improvement to the south?
No, this site is located outside of that agreement area. This site was done in 2001, so it's a totally separate property.
I have one question. We're going to have some utilities, you said, crossing the gas lines there? And is it both our water, the water and sewer lines cross? I don't know how deep those, those mains are, but how does that work? I mean, is there?
So, the main gas line that is just north of the truck parking to the area, it's dashed on the screen, the applicant is proposing to take all three utilities, storm, domestic water, and a forest main for sewer, all underneath the gas line. They will work directly with the gas company for those crossings. The gas company requires for any crossing to be a certain distance of separation. They also require those crossings to be at 90-degree angles. So, if you look at kind of the separation to the north from the south of the, the gas main, you can see how everything is very linear in kind of its, its crossing component. The forest main aspect for the gas main crossing makes the depth of that sanitary sewer easier to achieve, as trying to get the sanitary sewer to line up with the manhole on the other end, and then to have the dip for the forest main to go under the gas line, it's much more challenging without it being a forest main in that location. For the water itself, the water's pressurized anyway, so it doesn't make as much of a difference.
Mr. Moore, can you, I have several questions. I'll look back, as probably one of my other council members question. Number of parking stalls, I know that's based on the square footage. In our new zoning code, would we be modifying the number of, like, will this site eventually have too many parking spots according to our updated code?
I would venture to say the applicant would probably argue there's too many spaces now. They originally were wanting to install less than the minimum required by our code, but it required additional variance to be filed, pretty more boot and often the applicant pay a variance fee, you know, file a little paperwork justification for it. So, for a review process for this application, they're meeting the minimum our code requires. It's definitely something worth looking into with code updates if that ratio makes sense for building to the scale.
Mr. Moore, I love you. That was a very political answer without actually...
He's really good at that.
Yeah, I know. He's like, he gave me no answer to my question. So, in the future, I'm going to get a yes, no on this guy. In the future, would this building have the same required amount of spaces? If the zoning code proposal changes, we're looking at, go through?
I don't have an answer for you because...
Yeah, I've got...
Nothing has been drafted, nothing has been conversed.
It's not a fair question.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
I can't predict the futures.
On the record, no.
Can I, may I ask you a question, sir? I, I get this feeling you'd like to see less spaces there.
I feel like we're not going to require as many in the future code.
I mean, I was thinking to myself, that's a, that's a lot of spaces for that size building. Like, that's 200 spaces for 200,000 square feet. I mean...
That's Rick Moore math right there. 700.
It's a lot, but it's a lot, that's a lot of, that's a lot of space.
It's a lot of parking.
It's a lot of parking.
And these guys over here are salivating, they're going, that's a lot of pavement.
So, Sustainability Commission would also, you know, probably say anything you could do to eliminate...
Impervious?
Impervious structures would be welcome, but I also then had a question as well, as we're talking about use of space. Prop basin in a protected zone. It feels like there, that we have to build a space for water runoff because of this project in a zone that isn't a part of this, like, how, tell me how that gets built over there, when that's really not a part of the land that's associated with this project?
It is.
It is, okay.
So, the applicant is purchasing...
Okay.
...the woodland preservation strip, so if I go back to just...
So, they're going to purchase the woodland preservation strip?
Yes, if I go back to this slide...
Yeah. That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I wish this laser pointer worked, but the, the long east-west strip that connects Dialing Road to the back of the homes on Hill Road, that is all under the same ownership as the bean field where the house is located currently.
Okay.
Both are being sold to this developer for this project. So, the developer will now be responsible for the long-term maintenance and care of the woodland preservation area. The area where the basin is being located, if you look at the screen, there is a barn and then some, I know, wish the laser pointer worked. If you look...
Are you talking about where all those little...
No, that's where the house is located.
Registration mark, oh, okay.
If you see where the notch in the trees are, that's shaped like an upside-down C in the square that's located there, that is a...
That's one way to describe it.
That is a barn that is currently on the site with a, a field for horses just between the barn and the tree line to the east. To the left of the barn is a gravel pole station for a gas company to pull natural gas off the line. So, that area already has some improvements within it. The barn is being demolished with this project. It's not necessary for this developer's use, so they're taking that space for the barn to put in the retention basin.
Okay.
There's, there's the barn. Flip a couple slides, that square.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
See it?
Okay, okay. That's still on.
Florida, I could have said Florida, that's better than a C.
What's that?
I could have said that's shaped like Florida, it's better than a C.
That's much better.
Let's just move on.
Yeah.
We're going to leave that topic alone, please.
Mr. Moore, can you go back?
I had a question about mounding before Ms. Amos jumps in, though. Like, on the, on the side of their site where, that backs up to residential, so all the residents are going to be looking at the semi-trucks, is there any mounding planned? It doesn't look like it in the drawings, but I'm kind of curious.
Or fencing?
Because typically, we do some sort of mounding or fencing around those spaces to kind of help transition?
So, if you... So, to answer your question quickly, no, there is no mounding planned on the north side of the access drive or the truck, truck docks. That's the area north of the gas transmission line. The applicant has indicated with this exhibit here that they're proposing to subdivide that to create a future parcel for someone else to have a phase two to this site for future development. So, the, the best way I can describe it is they accidentally left it on a plan sheet. That square...
We think that's going to be something.
Is, was shown from a grading exhibit on how to fit another building on that parcel. So, they are looking to sell a portion of the property for a future phase, that's why there's no mounding or anything shown.
And this is all one piece, right?
If you take a look at the basing line that says PL dash that goes through the woodland, that is the property boundary, that's correct.
Okay, so this tiny little piece goes up into behind the houses?
Correct.
And there's not currently an access drive?
There is currently an access drive.
But it belongs to the barn?
So, there is, if I get back up, it's an aerial for you. So, there's currently a gravel drive that services the house, the 7995. That gravel drive leads all the way to the gas pole station that's located within the woodland preservation zone. That would be the primary access for any future phase. But, again, that's a future phase item, it's not, I think it's being discussed this evening.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Amos, I interrupted you.
No, I kind of interrupted you, it's good. And I'll probably do it 20 more times, it's fine. So, I am with Mr. Bennett on the, I do have an issue with the fact there's no separation for the residence, and I know they're planning on selling that off, but until then, maybe a temporary solution or a better solution, some trees, some fencing can be discussed. Not a huge fan of putting something behind those houses, so I'm going to be honest in that one. The, and, and I will say, the CEDA setback, this is where I wish we were in the residential, because CEDA setback in residential is 75. I don't know why it's further off for a house, but not a business. This seems really, really close to the road for such a large building. That, that doesn't make me happy at all. You said the fire department does not have an issue with the turning radius coming out of there, because it is that two-lane road?
So, you asked me about four questions there, so I'm going to try to remember them.
ADHD.
So, the houses along Hill Road, this plan or any future plan would not put anything directly behind them, as there are trees within that woodland preservation zone that will be retained.
So, whoever's buying that lot essentially is buying a tiny little plot of land and some trees?
Essentially.
Okay.
It looks to me like it would be like 30,000 to 40,000 square feet, I mean, tiny.
Maybe tiny.
Yeah, I think they max, I think they built like a 45,000, 60,000 square foot building, something in that.
That's a great sized building, though.
When your, your second question for the... When your, your second question for the landscaping components, I, this plan sheet I put on the screen does show they are screening some of that access drive south of the gas line. Within that gas transmission line, that gas transmission line is like 50, 75 feet wide, you can't plant anything within it. That's why there is the clear cut, if you go down Dialing Road, you can kind of see all the way back to where that barn is now. The gas company went through and clear cutted it, they cut it back in 2017, 2018 where they worked on replacing that line. So this plan can't propose any landscaping on top of that high transmission line. When looking at some of the landscape standards and where the applicant is proposing to divide the property, additional screening would have to take place on the north side of that transmission line, which shrinks the parcel that they're looking to.
Parking, right?
Well, it shrinks the parcel that would be north of the gas transmission line. So I think the applicant can answer those questions later this evening pretty well, but I think it's all just a numbers game on how to get the, the site plan to fit and also how to retain something useful for somebody else in the future. Because any decision to do anything north of that gas transmission line affects the usability of that parcel that's adjacent to it. Did I miss anything?
The only other thing, I mean, of course, we could eliminate some parking and shift the building and pull it back away from Hill Road, which would make me exceptionally happy, but the only other thing I think you didn't touch on was the, you, I wanted just to clarify, you said the fire department was comfortable with the access point to Hill Road with it being on the two lane, they felt there was enough to get semis out there without?
Yes, so the fire department didn't have any concerns with the, with the access drive. The applicant actually received a variance from the planning and zoning commission to make the access drive wider than our maximum 25-foot threshold. Planning and zoning approved that variance last Monday. When looking at the access point, the preliminary conversation that CEDA committee had with the fire department was on the access for the water main extension and hydrant spacing. When they looked at the turning exhibits for the semi trucks, they had no issues with the spacing to get their vehicle within the site. And in this site, while technically on this plan has three sides of access, there is the fourth side that's behind Meyer. There is an access drive that follows the whole rear of Meyer building, and there is about an eight-foot elevation change from Meyer site to this, but, you know, for the ladder truck, that would be involved for something of that nature, they didn't seem to be concerned.
Okay.
Question?
I think their comment was this is a small building for them, so.
They called it a small building?
They thought it was a small building.
Oh, that's lovely. Okay, thank you for answering the plethora for now.
So potentially have this building being built, we have Stark being built up the road on the other side. Obviously, the other areas highlighted in purple for eventual development of more industrial. What are the like, and I know this once again, crystal ball question, but the widening of Hill Road, I have to imagine that's pretty likely.
So the section of Hill Road that is not colored in is located in Fairfield County?
Right, well, now we can't.
So any improvements within the Fairfield County portion would be required by Fairfield County. On like a sidebar kind of note for traffic improvements, Fairfield County is petitioning to ODOT to reduce the speed of everything that's not colored in, in the county to 35 miles per hour. Currently, that is unposted at 55 miles per hour. That process really determines some of the effective results from the traffic study itself, but that is, from my understanding, currently being petitioned by the county to ODOT to be done. Improvements to Hill Road would likely take place with development that triggers its impacts along Hill Road.
So, and I guess the reason why I'm asking that is if we widen the road, what does that do to the setbacks then?
The setbacks wouldn't change because it's all within existing right-of-way.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Hare sometimes provides the CWICC with a industrial availability number. Do you know off the top of your head what our current availability is for industrial space?
Next to nothing.
If you don't, that's fine, I can check with how many.
He did give us that, he didn't give it us in writing, but he was talking about it, it's, I mean, it's next to nothing.
Yeah, it's usually very small.
I think we have less space available than what this whole building would be constructing.
Okay, all right, thank you. If I recall, it's usually like less than 5% if that, okay, thank you.
I just have one more question for my own understanding clarification. When I, the tree line that is all along the top, up, up through here, is this all?
Undeveloped.
That's all preserved and like held forever, like, is it done through like some kind of conservation easement where they can't take timber? What's the mechanism there to keep it?
So in 2001, that area was zoned as part of this planned district as a woodland preservation zone. So the woodland preservation zone prohibits any developmental activities to take place on it, which therefore is protecting the trees. The entire 300 acres for the Green Gate zoning site has a landscape table that requires any trees to be impacted over six inches for development, be replaced with a tree that's a minimum of three inches of like species. So there are a whole lot of landscape factors that, that go into play with the 2001 code. However, this kind of swath of land is noted as a tree preservation zone. It was retained by the original family that zoned the property. However, this developer is looking to purchase it as part of their agreement to buy the farm field.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Follow-up question on that and this, so as a woodland tree preservation zone, again, we're putting a prop basin in a woodland tree preservation zone. Mr. Boggs, how does that align with sort of the intent of that area? Because it's sort of, it's sort of intended to be a buffer between development, but we're using it, it feels like to aid development by putting this prop basin in to allow for a larger building to now be nestled next to that woodland preserve. While there may not be any trees being removed.
Right, so I've not studied the language of the woodland preservation.
It's fair.
Zone, but, you know, the analysis of it would come down to what is the, what is the wording of that provision in the zoning ordinance that governs it?
Mm-hmm.
And does this fall within that, that wording? So even if the intent was to curb development in some respects, if their language does not spell out what needs to be done to achieve that intent, then there you are.
Correct.
Excuse me, Mr. McLaughlin would like to take a moment of personal privilege, so do we need a motion to excuse him? No, okay. What else for Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, one final question, I promise. The path that runs along out front, bike path or, what, what is the intended path use again?
Multi-use trail.
Multi-use trail path. So in some of the other multi-use trail paths we have throughout the city, we have large timber fencing around those as well, would there, would, would this be more like, I guess, is there an opportunity for us to do some sort of rail or fencing?
So the, the timber rail that you're referencing is installed along a path that has a severe grade change off the end, so it's for the protection of the pedestrian on the trail. This trail will be at grade with no grade change on either end. This trail will be the exact same as what was constructed just north of Brenner Creek Gate Cove. This is the connecting portion to that trail.
Okay.
And then this will lead into the trail system that wraps the Meyer site. So when South Central Power develops, they'll construct their section of the trail, and then when the fifth out parcel gets developed by Meyer, Meyer will be completing the trail along their entire frontage, they'll be taking it from the gas station all the way to the South Central boundary.
Fine.
Did you say fine?
Yeah. I'm like, as good as you're gonna get from a lawyer.
You know you're gonna argue this again when you're.
What other questions?
The barn is not historical, correct?
I'm sorry?
The barn is not historical?
No.
Okay, if there are no other questions, is there a motion to move ordinance 25-026 to full counsel?
Some of them.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Shea, roll call, please.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to old and new business, the first item is OTH 25-017, pool residency and rates. If you had an opportunity to read Mrs. Jackson's report, that is the written report in your packet, the anticipation is that there will be a report or some sort of a presentation by the end of the year.
Yes, unfortunately, the meeting I had last week was not nearly as productive as I was hoping. We are testing out through the system some ideas. They are very manually input-intensive, so trying to figure out what the best route to take, both for city staff and for our residents, in order to implement a different registration system for pool for next year. So again, I'm, I'm still in testing phases, I, I think we have some ideas, but still trying to figure out if they're gonna work for, for us or not, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions or follow-up questions on that item? Okay, moving on, thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Moving on to the next item, OTH 25-018. In the packet this evening, there was a report from Mr. Peoples that they are, it's pending a consult from Mr. Boggs and some legislative process language, is that correct?
That is correct. We received a write-up on engineering considerations for safety of pedestrians, drivers, and people engaged in panhandling activities, and so we will be preparing legislation that I would expect to have to you in time for your next meeting for a first reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boggs. Any follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
That takes us to.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer for the work he put into it, Mr. Sims, all of there as well.
Please, thank you, Mr. Sims, and please thank Mr. Spencer for the help on this.
Moving on to the next item, OTH 25-019, I'd like to welcome various members from the Chamber of Commerce this evening, and I believe that they have a presentation. Mrs. Wood, if you'd like to come to the podium. And Mr. McLaughlin has asked to be excused during this presentation.
Just a sign note real quick, I think those of you who are coming in are coming in probably for public comment section. This first meeting hasn't ended, so it will end shortly, then we'll go into the second one.
Thank you, Mrs. Amos.
Okay. Good evening, members of council, Mayor Steger, Mr. Peoples, and city staff. I'm Elizabeth Wood, Executive Director of the Canal Winchester Chamber, and I'm joined tonight by a few members of our Board of Directors, including Leslie Thornton, our treasurer, Jay Bezak, and CJ Weiss. So please let him know if I'm over on time and you need to enforce any push-ups or anything. But as a local business owner and longtime resident, I've experienced firsthand the difference the chamber makes in helping businesses stay visible, connected, and supported. The relationships I've built through the chamber have more than paid for my membership each year. And to give a little perspective on why chambers should exist, chambers of commerce have existed for more than 400 years around the world and continue to serve as a business retention and community-building strategy in cities of all sizes. They are organizations that businesses want to be a part of because they connect people, they strengthen the local economy, and they help communities grow together. Chambers provide valuable resources, discounts, and connections for the businesses they serve, as well as perceived value for the consumers who trust and support these businesses. Recent national research from the Association of Chamber of Commerce executives and the Harris Poll highlight that value. In a study done last year in 2024, 81% of US adults said they view their local chamber as a trusted partner for business. 90% said they believe chambers help grow the local economy, and 64% say they're, they're more likely to buy from a chamber member business than a non-chamber, non-chamber business. We recognize that today, many businesses hold memberships in multiple chambers. That's why it's important for Canal Winchester's chamber to remain competitive and relevant, offering distinctive programs and value that make membership not just worthwhile but meaningful. The chamber report in your council packet shows that over the last few years, membership in our organization has grown, revenue has increased, and we now have two full-time staff members to enhance service and programming. According to the city's most recent business list, which was provided to me and to Ms. Amick on, on an email a few weeks ago, there are 351 businesses operating in Canal Winchester, according to that more, most recent list that the city has. The chamber currently represents 211 members, that's around 60% of our business community. Some chamber members are outside of city limits. Of the chamber members, the majority, 65%, are small businesses with fewer than 10 employees. A recent member survey that we've conducted when members opt-in to renew or to join the chamber gives insight into why businesses are joining our organization. Nearly 46% of the chamber's members who responded to this question cited networking and events as their primary reason, and then 17% said they joined because of the chamber's insurance program. 13% said marketing, 13% said visibility, 8% said sponsorship opportunities, and then 4% said for collaboration and volunteerism. Looking forward, we recognize that sustained, large-scale growth may not be realistic for the Canal Winchester Chamber. Our focus is starting to shift toward retention and depth of engagement to provide meaningful programming, as well as leadership development and experiences that strengthen long-term relationships. We're also refining our membership dues structure to collect sponsorships and commitments upfront, creating a more predictable, sustainable funding model that reduces repeated requests for support from our generous sponsors. We've introduced programs in recent months, like referral roundtables and sunrise socials, which have been very popular, well-attended, and they're helping to drive engagement and membership. We're preparing to launch Leadership Canal Winchester, which will be a nine-month program that will cultivate business, civic, and nonprofit leaders across our community. The Funding Request Before You, which proposes a tapered allocation of bed tax funds, serves as a bridge toward long-term self-sufficiency. We're requesting $65,000 in 2026, $45,000 in 2027, and $25,000 annually thereafter. This proposed continued investment would support tourism-related programming, as well as professional development and community events that strengthen Canal Winchester's economy and quality of life. On behalf of the chamber's board, staff, and members, thank you for your partnership and for your commitment to the businesses that make Canal Winchester such a strong and vibrant place to work and live.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood. Counsel, questions?
I have a, well, go ahead, Mrs. Amos.
So, Ms. Wood, before you came on board, and first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Pleasure to see you up there. Before you came on as the chamber person, one of the conversations that I had was that we have two very dominant chambers surrounding us. You have Groport and Pickerington, who are doing a large amount of things, and every event that I go to for them is 100-plus people generally. And one of the things that I had mentioned was that I'd love to see our chamber working with those organizations, and I was told that's not usually something that happens. I would love to see our chamber start actively engaging with others. The other piece that I wanted to just bring up is that when we had this conversation a few years ago for the, the investment that you guys asked us to make then, when I asked the city, what was the chamber doing to benefit the city, the answer was nothing. So there was not really, the chamber wasn't really bringing anything in, they weren't trying to identify businesses, there wasn't a lot of relationship. So my question to you is, could you come up with some solutions in working with our development team, so with Lucas and Andrew, who are constantly looking to bring businesses in? Could there be some way where the chamber could play a role into helping bringing some of those businesses in as well, or identifying, you know, future prospects to bring in? Because we do have some open businesses downtown, and how can we work together? And how can we work together to fill those buildings? Is that something that the chamber could assist in looking at?
Yes. I currently have monthly meetings scheduled with Lucas so that we can talk about where our work overlaps and then future potential and how we can help each other out, how the city and the chamber can work together. And also, too, in another two weeks, I've just offered to host the Central Ohio Chamber Execs, like about 50 of them, to come out to Canal Winchester and to see our beautiful city. And so we are networking actively in my two months with the chamber so far, as director, that is. I'm a member for longer than that. But I've been connecting one-on-one with chamber directors around Central Ohio, as well as just in group settings as well. And I'm working with Lancaster and Pickerington for an event, a Fairfield County event, in December.
Outstanding. Glad to hear that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moore?
This might not be a fair question to answer or ask, because you've only been there for two months. But this request, 65, 45, 25. Are you asking that because that's what you think you can get? Or, and it's gonna be tough next year when the $20,000, or 2027, when the $20,000 decrease? Not saying I want to give money away, like it's going out of style. But I also want you guys to be as honest as you can be with what you'll actually need, instead of, you know, hey, this year we need this, and then, you know, coming back and saying, oh, shoot, you know what, we do need it. I mean, I know you can't tell the future, but don't hamstring yourself when asking for something. I guess that's what I'm saying.
The treasurer would like to step up.
Sure.
I'll defer to the treasurer.
Yeah.
As you said, it's hard to predict the future.
Yeah.
But based on the trajectory that our growth has taken over the last several years and based on our 2025 numbers, those were not part of our packet. We could be at a break-even point, I mean, literally break-even point at the $45,000 level mark for the numbers that they stand today.
Okay.
So I feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to make that mark. That by the time we're in two-year, three-year, that the $25,000 would be obviously very helpful to us. But we should, we're on the path to be self-sustaining.
Okay.
Ms. Thornton, so you're saying that $45,000 is what it would take annually for you to be self-sustaining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Wood, I have a question about your comments around tourism. So we have Destination CW, and that, they are currently known as the, they're the Tourism Board for Canal Winchester. How do you propose working with them to complement tourism from the chamber?
We're doing that this weekend, for example. We have the Canal Wellness Fest at the high school on Saturday, and concurrently, the Destination Canal Winchester's put together a day of events going around to different businesses. What specials do you want to offer that day? Because people are gonna be in town. For our 5K, for example, we just got someone over the weekend that's coming in. Their home address is Colorado. We've got someone coming from Arizona. We've got a couple people from near Philadelphia that are gonna be in the 5K. So we've got people from around the country, as well as Northern Ohio and such, that are gonna be around. And how do we take advantage of that? And so, for example, I think the Wigwam is offering a drink special, and other businesses are offering different specials. I think collaborating in that way can be helpful, and we can grow that as well. We're stronger together than we are working separately, of course.
Anything else?
My, yeah, my only thought with this request is I know we're going through an evaluation phase, and I would, my only part of this is just, I think, I don't want to, I'd rather see us do a shorter-term contract, maybe like a two-year. And again, no opposition to this, but I think as we've been going through and evaluating all of our sort of city partners, and I know there are a few that may need contract updates coming up, I think we might look at maybe some shorter-term agreements, just as we're trying to sort of re-establish, not re-establish, but establish working boundaries with all of the groups. Because, you know, who's to say that, you know, Ms. Amick, you know, you're thought of like, there's a lot of overlap, you know, do, is there a point at which some cities may merge a chamber and a destination? You know, so I think, again, I have no opposition to this extension at all. I think we may just want to be, I'm thinking shorter-term at the moment, as we're sort of working through an evaluation phase. And that, I think, will be complete soon, hopefully, looking at the mayor and Matt, who are spearheading that report for the city.
Thank you. And some of the thought behind that was some of our funding is going away that we're receiving this year. We received a $4,000 Destination Bed Tax Grant for the Canal Wellness Fest. So they're not gonna be offering that next year, is my understanding. So things like that, that can help us boost visibility. Like, for example, we're pitching TV stations this week, hoping to get, you know, TV coverage and those things, just to let people know about Canal Winchester. It's really not that far away from Columbus.
The 27, I'm sorry, the 25K into the future after, I think it's in 2027, the 25K. So that does seem kind of low. If you're looking to be self-sustaining, why would you, why would you need that?
I'll defer to our treasurer.
I understand that getting back on track with the goals that you set forward in the previous contract, I understand you want to get back on track with that. That makes sense for year '26 and '25, '26. But as far as year '27 and into the, however long we would approve a contract, I'm not making that in my head reconcile with self-sustaining.
Okay. I think that the idea behind the 25K, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was to invest that money into more events that were bringing people to Canal Winchester, just to give us some flexibility of funds for, for the events, like the 5K and the Wellness Fair and the Home Sweet Home. Would you say that?
Yeah. And we're looking at adding a restaurant week as well. And to, in the council packet, it mentions the change in the membership structure. So currently, members are paying under $1,000 at most. I think it's in the 700s. 225 is the lowest. So we'll be changing to a tiered membership structure, starting the process in about a year. And start to finish, it takes about a year to implement. Let's say there's a little bit of a delay, we would need some wiggle room on that potentially. Wouldn't want to need to come in for an emergency if we needed to.
I know you have some upcoming work that you mentioned about getting some member feedback about that tiered approach. What does your research show you in terms of, do other chambers have this wide-tiered approach to income generation for their chambers?
Many chambers have moved to this approach in recent years, so we won't be alone in moving to that system. It makes things easier by asking for the money upfront, just kind of, for lack of a better phrase, choose your own adventure at the beginning of the year. How many spots do you want at the awards night? How many spots do you want at the 5K? Do you want a few positions in the leadership program for your employees to participate in? And what events and how much do you want to participate and sponsor through the year? So sponsors, or memberships, rather, could be $10,000. It could be $200 for someone. It could be $10,000, it could be $20,000 for a business, just depending on their size and what adventure they would like that year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Wood, thank you, and thank you to the members of the chamber that are here this evening. We'll take this under advisement. I do believe that we're all, as Mr. Bennett mentioned, we're all waiting for the results of the consultant study that is in the process of being completed. So we'll be in touch at a future date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other old or new business that is not on the agenda this evening? Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, just a, I guess, a point of clarity on the chamber contract. What next steps, I assume, would be ordinance or a resolution proposing or approving a contract?
Yeah. Mr. Peoples and I were just discussing that, that yes, in order to get this done by the end of the year, we'd need to bring something forth at the next meeting in two weeks, so.
I, do we believe that we'll have the consultants?
No.
Okay.
No.
I think that's...
And I think, as we discussed before, anything that comes out of the consultant is going to be a transition period anyway. I don't look that we would come in and take a sledgehammer to anything and go. So maybe along the lines of what Mr. Bennett had discussed of a two-year, and just putting that framework together, so there is a transition process if something is identified.
Right, okay.
So we were just waiting for, you know, I guess, council's direction on what to do with the contract for the next meeting.
So straw poll, maybe? How do we feel about a two-year agreement for the chamber, 65, year one, tiered down to 45 in year two? How is it?
Do we think that transition will take two years? If there is any change? I'm kind of leaning towards the one year, and then maybe in year two, they could come back and say, hey, I'm gonna need 65 as we transition, because we've got bigger plans due to what the consultant brought back. So I'd rather see us do one year, and then the following year, they could come back and say, here's a dollar amount, instead of just guessing 45. It might be more.
I, I guess my only concern with that, and I think it's a fair idea, other than, that's a lot of, I don't know, anxiety to put on the organization, thinking, oh, my money may just be gone. They're canceled. So that would be my only concern about that, is just all of a sudden, it's gone.
I have mixed feelings about the one and the two-year. I'm opposed to a three-year. But I think the other thing, too, is that the chamber has new leadership. And with new leadership comes new thought, new ideas, new enthusiasm, whatever you want to pile into that list of ingredients. And so Mrs. Wood might come back in a year and say, oh, we're having great success, and we've implemented these programs, and thank you, but we're done. We're good now. So I would tend to agree with Mr. Buskirk. Because they're under new leadership, let's give them some time to see what that year-two ask might be. I'd be in favor of a one.
Did Mrs. Jackson have...
I have faith in our future council as well to support our chamber. We've got great leadership. We've got a great council, and I believe that we would support them if they had a need.
So our previous contract, or the contract we're currently under, was originally done for two years with the option of a third-year extension. So another option would be to write it for one or two years with an extension option.
Mrs. Jackson, the three years expires at the end of 2025?
Correct.
Thank you. It just doesn't feel like it's been three years since we had that conversation. It's not like, really?
It went like that.
I look forward to seeing what the consultants have said. I really do. Because I think there's going to be some new opportunities that the chamber may be able to take, which may lead them on to even bigger success, or give them way more opportunities within the city to promote some of the things that are going on. So that's why, for me, I think the one-year is good, because by then, we will have that conversation. And it won't be a year. That's the thing I think we need to remember. We can say one year now, we're going to be revisiting this in a couple months anyways to discuss what was going on in that, and out of the consultants. And from there, if council decides, if the will of council could be to extend it at that point in time based on what's been presented, or to have the chamber come in and have additional conversations, there can be things that happen prior to the end of that one year.
Absolutely.
Mr. Shea?
Oh, I personally have a lot more confidence in the direction of the chamber now than I've had previously. And I think a lot of it has to do with Ms. Woods being the executive, how she's the executive director, the fact that she is a local resident, and she is a local business owner, and she has reached this community. That, and from conversations with her, she's vested in it being a success. And I think that really just sweetens the deal for us, because what a great asset we, as a collective community, get in Ms. Woods' knowledge and resources. And I think there's a lot of good there, so, yeah.
And given that, are you, like, thinking of one year, two years, the full three years? What are you thinking?
I'm pretty amiable to all of them, honestly. There's benefits. I mean, one year's good, because you get the consultant's reports back, and you kind of figure out which way we want to steer that conversation. Two years is nice. I also worry about the cash runway, because you don't know what's gonna happen. And I'm not opposed to funding them at 65 for two years with an option for renewal. I'm not opposed to putting the ability for the chamber to say, hey, we don't need that, and they can return it to us. That's also an option. I mean, that would be unheard of, but it could happen. So, I mean, the VFW does it. Like, they return the money every year. So, I mean, there are organizations that do return the money. I'm in support of it. I think with the absolute business revolution that's gonna happen in this area over the next five to 10 years, I think it really becomes important for us to have a stable, successful, robust chamber. And we also have bed tax revenues that are growing, so I don't feel like we're placing an additional burden on the city's finances.
Okay. How about you? Anything else, Mr. Buskirk?
Nothing else. I do appreciate all the work that they've put into this.
Now, I think of the chamber and supporting our business community, it's super, super important. So how about this? How about we kind of talk through a one-year with an option for year two? And we'll see you perhaps, you know, we'll see you sooner than that, as Ms. Amos said. But we'll maybe come back at the end of March, at the end of Q1 2026, and see how things are going. Does that, is that something you would be open to? Okay. We'll work with you to get that piece of legislation drawn up. And anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. It's currently a motion made by Mr. Shea, second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Buskirk?
Yes.
Mr. McGoughlin? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes. Timeout, 7:26. Counsel will resume at 7:35 PM.
OP Cheney Mill, the farmer's market and the openings of several new businesses throughout the city, one thing is evident. Canal Winchester is not only a comfy place to live, work, and visit, but it is thriving and expanding rapidly. I want to be a resource to this city and help in any way that I can to ensure the continued flourishing and growth of Canal. On the legislative side, I want to make sure you all know that Ohio is entering a mid-senses congressional redistricting phase caused by the expiration of the current maps, which will happen next year. Governor DeWine has now officially convened the Ohio Redistricting Commission due to the failure of my colleagues in the legislature to pass constitutional maps with majority approval from both caucuses of both chambers of the state legislature. By our state's constitution prescribed the deadline, which was September 30th. The commission will have until the end of this month to pass fair constitutional bipartisan congressional maps. My colleagues have proposed fair constitutional maps, which may be found in both House Bill 442 and Senate Bill 259. These maps would favor Republicans in eight of the 15 Ohio seats in Congress and Democrats in seven of those 15. This is proportional to the 55% to 45% Republican to Democrat partisan leaning of Ohio voters over the last 10 years. In simpler terms, Ohio's voters have trended Republican 55% of the time, and in the last 10 years of elections, both statewide and nationally, and trended 45% Democrat in those same elections over that same period of time. And the proposed maps from my caucus reflect such. The first meeting of the Ohio Redistricting Commission will be held tomorrow at 9:00 AM at the State House. You as citizens may submit your own proposals for Ohio's congressional maps and testimony at redistricting.ohio.gov. I recommend doing so, so not only you can make your voice heard in this crucial process, but to communicate the voice of the people, which as we as legislators should be considering when drawing congressional districts. The statewide property tax crisis is still, of course, top of mind for many of myself and my colleagues at the State House, as we filled through nearly 20 related legislative proposals. Some of these proposals introduced by my colleagues include House Bill 103, which would increase the homestead exemption and income limit for qualifying individuals; House Bill 143, which would authorize a property tax exemption for certain long-term homeowners; House Bill 156, which would authorize a property tax freeze for certain owner-occupied homes; House Bill 365, called the Property Tax Refund Act, which would provide a tax credit or refund for certain qualifying individuals. I will return periodically to give more updates like this, and again, look forward to returning to this great city, both professionally and leisurely. If you have not already made a vote plan, I encourage you to vote on or before November 4th, and I hope to see you out in the community, or maybe this Saturday at the 5K or the Wellness Fest. Thank you, and I yield my time back to the floor unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this evening. Additional communications and petitions this evening, we have Madison Township Police Statistics for September 2025. I know we do have a member of the force with us this evening. Any verbal update you'd like to provide as well?
I was not provided any statistics to give tonight.
Oh, we have. They're already included in our packet.
Good evening, council, city officials, citizens. The only news that I'm going to pass along is that we have, going to have a tent set up at the Huntington Bank on trick-or-treat night, and we're going to have officers out to interact with the citizens of Canal Winchester.
Great. That'll be great. Thank you so much. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for being here. Next item under Communications and Petitions, we have, oh, this is going to be a butchering. Debbie Jacobala.
You got it.
Ooh. I'm a dyslexic guy. Yeah. So with, sorry, the SBA Disaster Recovery with a petition this night on the flooding and loans.
Yes. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having me here this evening, and thank you, Mr. Bennett, for pronouncing my name correctly. Not a requirement, but I am the Public Affairs Specialist with the Disaster Recovery Team for the Small Business Administration. And the reason I am here this evening is when the flooding occurred in this region in the end of July, specifically the 26th through 28th, the governor asked for a declaration, which he has received from the Small Business Administration. It's referred to as an agency declaration. In fact, the first two sheets I have up are what I like to call the bureaucratic aspect of this. But what it does explain is that the majority of the disaster occurred in Fairfield County. But when we have an agency declaration, I'll use air quotes around the word "benefit," the benefit is the contiguous counties, which there's five, all receive the same loan eligibility as the primary, as opposed to when FEMA is involved in a presidential declaration. So what I've been doing is going to county commissioners, village and town council meetings, making sure people are aware, not only if there are survivors in this community, for example, but they're aware that the Small Business Administration, I usually use my shirt as a prop at this point, is more than small business. As much as Elizabeth Woods did point out, and very well this evening, that businesses are the focus and the heart of a community, our small business disaster loans also support, I'll go through the whole list, not just small businesses, but private nonprofits, faith-based organizations, agricultural cooperatives, homeowners and renters. The Small Business Administration's, I know, a lot of people aren't aware of that. I wasn't myself prior to coming into this field. And the reason that we do that is it's to make a community restore in whole after disasters. We've been all over the country. I worked personally for the Atlanta Bureau, so everything east of the Mississippi. I was in Tennessee before this, where they had tornadoes and storms come through for a three-week period earlier this spring. So we go where we are needed and asked to be. And in particular, with all those loans that I am mentioning, individuals don't have to pay any interest or any payments for the first year, whether they have loans they took out as renters to replace their primary automobile and the items they lost in the rental that they were in, or it's the $500,000, up to $500,000 loan that a homeowner can take out. There are no interest payments and no payments for that year. It's just another way SBA is trying to help a community get back on its feet. Now, specific to businesses and private nonprofits, it's up to $2 million. Keep forgetting I have the clicker here. Let's see, where are we up to? There we are. Small business and private nonprofits, it's up to $2 million. And there is a piece of that, that again, is for the physical loans, physical disaster loans. But what is often, I'll back up one second, our deadline for the physical disaster loans, if we're getting the word out here this evening, that people can apply up until November 12th. However, there is another loan that we have called the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. The acronym IDOL, I think, is perfect because the loan is anything but. It is the capital revenue that allows a business to keep its doors open. And the deadline for that one is all the way into halfway through 2026. And the reason for that is often businesses aren't aware that a disaster in, like, for example, where Lancaster had a lot of the flooding, a business here may not realize that they had quite a few residents of Lancaster that aren't coming in. They don't have their car anymore. They are stopping in for whatever their business serves. And so the capital that IDOL provides allows a business to keep their employees on the payroll. It literally keeps the lights on. So that deadline, again, is longer. The piece that I will close with this evening is, whoops, went too far, is that we are really, really trying to get the word out, and a lot of this is for businesses and community to be aware. So if something were to happen that is more specific to Canal Winchester, not that we want that to happen, but they are aware that these are available, is that if you qualify for a physical disaster loan as a homeowner, as a business, as a faith-based organization or a private nonprofit, you have up to two years after receiving that loan to apply for a mitigation loan that's valued up to 20% of that loan. So I use a nice, easy figure. You've got $1,000 in physical disaster loan. While you're making those improvements, or excuse me, those repairs from the damage that was caused, you realize, wow, if I had another $200, 20%, I could do some mitigation work that would maybe protect me from, you know, my roof being damaged again or the flooding. So we're really trying to emphasize the availability as well to mitigate. So the overall focus of our program is to support a community to recover, whether they are a renter or one of your larger businesses in the community, to be able to get back on their feet. And with that, I will allow, ask if anyone has any questions.
Just a quick question. You said the date, the end date for the, not the EIDL, the EIDL loan, but the other one is November, what?
12th.
November 12th. And is there any issues with funding at this point because of the shutdown?
Oh, that's a great question, actually. We are funded out of a different area of the federal budget, one reason why I am here this evening. The application and processing of loans is continuing, the paying out of loans, it's all continuing because we fall under that category that needs to keep operating so we keep communities vital. So yes, that's a great question. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Enjoy Ohio.
Thank you.
The last item under Communications and Petition is the Destination Canal Winchester Third Quarter Financial Submission. Ms. Pierce also provided a printed copy this evening as well, I believe.
Oh, this is good. What's human services?
Human Services. Okay.
It's in our packet.
Yeah, I know. It's definitely in your packet, as it is assigned to Communications Petition. Okay. We'll move to public comment. We did receive a public comment submission from Ms. Ortiz, and with that, that is available in the packet, obviously. But also, for public comment this evening, again, I will just, brief reminder, for public comment, we are limited to three minutes per individual. Your time will not begin, on this beautiful clock, until you begin speaking. We do ask that you just state your name for the record, and you may be granted more time, but there's no guarantee. Anyway, if you have specific questions, this is not necessarily a question-and-answer period, but if you do, we do have city staff reports immediately following public comment, so that if there are questions that you have, we might be able to try and answer. If not during this session, obviously, city officials do a great job of trying to follow up afterwards. So with that, I will welcome any public comment to the podium this evening.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Harris Ortiz. I'm here tonight as the steward of a living ecosystem, a place where native plants, pollinators, and wildlife thrive. Yet, under our current property maintenance code, the native plants that have grown here for thousands of years are treated as weeds and thus violations. Like I said, my name is Marcia Harris Ortiz. I'm a fourth-generation resident of Canal Winchester, and I was recently cited under Section 302.04, which limits organic plant growth to eight inches. On October 2nd, I was notified by the Planning and Zoning Administrator that my yard was out of compliance, and I was ordered to cut down native asters and goldenrod, which are critical late-season food sources and habitat for pollinators and insects, birds, and other wildlife. These are not noxious weeds. They're intentionally cultivated as part of a diverse, ecologically-balanced yard that supports food for my family and local wildlife, sequesters carbon, improves rainwater infiltration, and reduces stormwater runoff. My garden is a certified wildlife habitat through the National Wildlife Federation, and every plant is intentional. Yet, under the current code, native and ecologically supportive plants are treated as weeds, while purely ornamental species are allowed. This highlights a gap between the code and our shared sustainability goals. The Canal Winchester Community Plan adopted December 11th, 2023, recommends updating zoning to encourage the use of native plants in lawn areas and limit the total percent of the site in turf grass. That vision supports pollinator gardens and aligns directly with the city's sustainability goals, but the code has not yet been updated to reflect those recommendations. Neighboring cities, including Columbus, have already revised their codes to allow native pollinator habitats. In June of 2025, Columbus City Council amended Chapter 709 to permit well-maintained pollinator gardens that support ecosystems and urban agriculture, including an exemption for native plants from standard height limits. I'm not here to challenge enforcement tonight, but to invite progress. I want to work with the city and the Sustainability Commission to update our property maintenance code in a way that balances ecological health, neighborhood aesthetics, and community well-being. I understand that the city is already working with a consultant on some of these updates, and I hope that my experience helps illustrate why this review is so important for residents acting in good faith. While that process moves forward, I believe enforcement actions like mine should be public and transparent, and that enforcement of this section in regards to native plants be paused in future cases until new standards reflect our shared sustainability goals. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to making Canal Winchester a more sustainable, forward-looking community, a place where native plants and the residents cultivating them are safe from code enforcement.
Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. I know Ms. Ortiz has also reached out to the Sustainability Commission, and I believe they invited you in to kind of do a presentation as well. And so I know that this matter will already be with them for consideration, and there are several master gardeners in there in that group. I think there are five or six we have on that board. And so I think we can look to them to help make some of those recommendations and adjustments to code. Obviously, we would need to take that to city staff for consideration as well. But yes, I do thank you for being here this evening. I do also know that this matter is sort of under referral to the Sustainability Commission as well. So just for members of council. Anyone else wish to make public comment this evening?
They're all part of my crew.
Okay. Great. Listen.
Maybe it was not when you were done. I was waiting for the right.
There you go. There you go.
You brought a heck of a.
I don't know if you saw our pledge of allegiance. Say it, say it, everybody.
You're welcome.
Right? That was awesome.
Okay. No, thank you all for being here this evening in support. We appreciate your attendance, for sure. We will then, if there is no one else who wishes to make public comment.
They may not want to sit through the next hour of us talking.
We will move forward to reports of city staff and officials. First report is the mayor's report. Mayor Steger.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have no report for this evening, but am here to answer any questions. If there are any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Okay.
You guys, you did talk about the, something about the consultant, and we have posed questions back to them. Several of us have all put questions back to them, and we're waiting for response. So we're in a back-and-forth right now on the consultant for our peer partners in the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you. City administrator report, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I do not have anything to add to my written report.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. I guess we'll move on to Fairfield County Sheriff's report. Sergeant Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Why do you guess? It's the next thing on my list.
He's guessing.
Yeah.
I'll follow suit. I don't have anything for you, though. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Sergeant Strong?
That easy?
All right. It won't be that easy, actually. All right. So I do know that we are working on the next agreement with Fairfield County Sheriff's, and there's some discussion that's already begun. And I think I would just, point of view of one, like to express my gratitude for having Sergeant Strong present as a member or representative of the head of the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office Branch in Canal Winchester. And I would like to sort of hope or encourage that Fairfield County sheriffs keep you on as our representative here, or if there's a way to make that a part of our agreement, I would love to see that as a part of our extension that requires Sergeant Strong to stay.
Which he doesn't want to.
Yeah, so hopefully he likes him. As long as he wants. We like him to stay. Yeah.
I will see what I can do.
No, he's been a great representative. I think, you know, we've had a few different sergeants come through, at least on my time on council, and I would love to see us have some consistency in the role. But I also think Sergeant Strong is a great representative of the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office, and I think, you know, we love having you here. So if there's an opportunity for us to leverage your services here as a part of our next contract, I would love to see us do that. So.
I appreciate those words. I do thoroughly enjoy this assignment, so I would be happy to stay and work that out. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. We'll move on, no guessing, to Law Director, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have nothing to add to my remarks from work session earlier. We do not have a request for executive session this evening, and so I am happy, however, to answer or promise and answer later to any questions you may have this evening.
I would be curious about a follow-up on the Woodland Preserve interpretation. Okay. Just how that looks like maybe Mr. Moore is already, but.
So, Mr.?
Yeah. I know. Okay. Finance Director.
I have.
Oh, you have a question?
I do.
Mr. Boggs.
If this is inappropriate, you need to tell me.
Okay.
Regarding.
Good way to start.
Regarding Ms. Ortiz's comment and the enforcement action pending against her property or residence presently, is it inappropriate of me to ask questions about that because it is in enforcement?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boggs?
Well, I don't know if mine's for Mr. Boggs or if it's for Mr. Moore, because I was going to ask to have some of the other codes from cities pulled and sent to us so that we could see what other cities have done in advance, if that's possible.
In regard to?
To the changes, the 709.2 and 302.4, the different.
The pollinator gardens and the.
Yeah, the pollinator gardens and the different changes that have been made. I'd like to see ours and a couple others, if possible. And then to see where we are, how far we are with hours being looked at, if that's been considered yet, or if that's still under review. I know it's not your turn, Mr. Moore, but you can answer. Time now. The total wasn't his turn. Now he's waiting.
Do you want to address it on your own? Or do you want me to? I don't address it now. Did I follow up? Okay. Yeah, I mean, so I've pulled up what Columbus did in the summer that Ms. Ortiz referenced. I can provide a link to that to counsel, you know, for your information. And, you know, I understand as well that it's going through the Sustainability Committee, where there's some subject matter expertise, too. So while Columbus, and I'm just looking at it here in the moment, I'm sure that they've done some very smart things. I think that your Sustainability Committee will be able to contribute to that as well.
Oh, I agree. I have some smart cookies.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Moore was following the rules to a T.
Cookies. We will move to Finance Director, Ms. Jackson's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Just quickly, wanted to give an update on the 2026 budget. I was hoping to have it to you today, but as I had stated previously in one of my written reports, we were waiting on some numbers. So we have those. I'm putting the final touches on it and reviewing to make sure that everything that needs to be included is in there. It will go to city staff, hopefully tomorrow morning, for their review. And then with any luck, you will have it next Monday to start reviewing before our meeting in November, where I will formally present it to you. Just a reminder that appropriations are effective immediately upon passage, so we still have time prior to the end of the year. There will be no need for waiver of readings or any type of emergency on this.
So if somebody, let's say, felt really passionately about bed tax funds in support of painting a fire truck, we would need to work that into the but, no? That's a, okay, we'll talk about it. We'll talk about offline. We'll circle back.
We can always do an appropriation amendment, Mr. Bennett.
Perfect. It's what Mr. Peoples likes to hear.
I actually, and on that note, with the appropriation amendment, as Mr. Peoples had sent out to you previously, we did amend the appropriation amendment that's on for second reading this evening to include two rather large purchases, both that have significant lead times. One is IT-related. It is a server, storage server, that will go out of warranty at the end of March, so we're trying to get that moving. And the other is a large vehicle that we would like to get back into our fleet as soon as possible. They said if we can get moving on that relatively soon, we should have it by the end of January. So that's why we are asking for that this evening.
Okay. Thank you for those updates, Ms. Jackson. Any questions for Ms. Jackson? No? Okay.
Do you need that money passed tonight to get that vehicle, or do you?
Yes, that is in the request to waive third reading. Again, no need for emergency declaration. It would just be a waiver of third reading.
We'll move to Mr. Moore, who will be providing a report on Development Director this evening.
I do not have anything to add. To any report Lucas may have provided, I'm not even sure what he provided, so I'm here to fill his seat and answer any questions you have.
All right. Do we want to circle those questions back around? Anybody? We'll give them a break.
The only question I had that was still unanswered was, do we know if that particular piece has already been reviewed by the current, but I don't think it has. I think we're still in the early, early phases, aren't we?
The zoning code update at this time does not have any scope to amend the property maintenance codes, so that is a totally separate subcode that has been adopted by city council. Very similar to like the building code. That's a totally separate document that we refer to.
Good answer. Thanks, Mr. Moore.
So we can change that real quick.
But Lucas would have given me the I when I originally sent him. I'm just going to throw that out. He had faces that we can read where.
The next Sustainability Commission meeting is the first Wednesday in November. So.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Wheels of government.
We're worth the wait.
I know.
That's where the experts.
Those poor pollinators, those poor monarch caterpillars, those poor swallowtails.
Anything else, Mr. Moore? No? Any questions for Mr. Moore?
You're a bit dramatic.
We'll move on to resolutions. We have Resolution 25-051 on for reading this evening. Ms. Pierce, would you please read that resolution?
A resolution to adopt and approve the cybersecurity program and designate a person responsible for said program.
The sponsor is Mr. Moore.
Motion to adopt Resolution 25-051.
Second.
Sponsor. Okay.
Mr. Moore.
Motion made by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Amick. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amis? Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Thank you. I lost the word motion. That was the one that just... Yeah. Next, we have Resolution 25-052. Ms. Pierce, could you read that resolution as well?
A resolution to approve the disposal of various surplus vehicles and equipment.
Thank you. The sponsor for that this evening is Mr. Busker.
I move to adopt Resolution 25-052.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Busker, second by Mr. Shea. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes. Thank you. We have on to ordinances, none on for third reading this evening, on for second reading. We have Ordinance 25-024. Kirk, back to you?
An ordinance to amend the 2025 appropriation ordinance, number 24-033, amendment number five.
Thank you. The sponsor is Mr. McLaughlin.
Two motions.
Yep. I move to request a waiver of the third reading for Ordinance 25-024 due to the time-sensitive nature of the funds for proper upper... Yeah, there we go.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McLaughlin. I have cut wind of Mr. Busker's second, first. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Or, Mr. Busker, I'm sorry. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you.
I now move to adopt Ordinance 25-024.
Second. I got it. Motion made by Mr. McLaughlin, second by the chair. Roll call?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to first readings. We have first Ordinance 25-025. Ms. Pierce, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Tucson Incorporated for the construction of the McGill Park Base 2B project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The sponsor this evening is Ms. Amick.
Thank you. A motion to request waiver of second and third reading.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Amick, second by Mr. Busker to suspend the rules requiring a second and third reading. Any discussion? Roll call?
Did you state that reason pretty well, sir?
I'd say timing of the contract.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Now, move to adopt ordinance 25-025.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Amick's made a motion to adopt Resolution 25-025, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And finally, this evening, we have ordinance 25-026. Ms. Pierce, could you read this one as well?
An ordinance approving the final development plan for Velocity Hill Road and the planned industrial district of the Green Gates Development.
Thank you. Mr. Busker is the sponsor.
First reading, all.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to council reports with all kinds of asterisks. We have a JED Expansion hearing on Monday, November 3rd, at 5:30 PM. That's a public hearing. At 6:00 PM, we'll have a city council work session on November 3rd, and then at 7:00, we'll begin full council. On Monday, November 17th, we'll have work session at 6:00 and full council at 7:00. Upcoming Council Connect meeting dates, we will have our next Council Connect, November 19th, from 6:30 to 7:30. That'll be a Wednesday night. Come out, stop, maybe there'll be...
I think it's you and I, so we're pure entertainment and great conversation.
And then the final one for 2025 is December 20th, 9:00 to 10:00 AM. We'll go to CW Human Services Report, Mr. Shea.
Okay, so this is the longest report Alitha's ever sent me, and I'm sorry about that in advance. But the transportation program provided 1,191 one-way trips and drove 8,647 miles. Tools for schools, as of today, they've distributed 146 bookbags filled with great appropriate supplies. The community food pantry has served 1,466 individuals and provided 20,598 meals. The Feeding Our Future program is currently serving 40 children each week and, to date, has provided 432 meals this school year. The few upcoming events and fundraisers is Community Care Day, Friday, October 31st. If you know a senior living within city limits who could use some outside help, please let us know so we can connect them with volunteers. Brews and Blankets, Wednesday, December 4th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Sweet Harmony. Sign up through the link on the Destination, or not Destination, Human Services social media or via the Chambers page. And Reindeer Games, Saturday, December 13th. The signup link is not yet available, but will soon be posted on their social media and Destination CW page. Both Brews and Blankets and Reindeer Games support Adopt a Family program. They're a great time, and there's some really great costumes at Reindeer Games. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. CW ICC, Ms. Amick.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The Canal Winchester Industry and Commerce Corp. will meet next Wednesday, October 29th, at 11:30 AM here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. CW JR D, Ms. Amick, sorry, Ms. Amos and Mr. Moore.
You know, Ms. Amick and I sit next to you just to make it complicated for you to say our names.
It really is hard when you have ADHD.
It is. Our next meeting's November 20th. We have a lot of things, I mean, it's sort of our down season-ish. Wrestling's getting ready to open and start, and...
Fittings are coming up, equipment turn-in for football's coming up. Most of the football, actually, I think all the football teams wrapped up as of Sunday.
We did have, our first and second graders did exceptionally well in the tournament that they played in the past weekend and won, so shout out to them. Other than that, we're just, I think, just getting, taking a moment of pause before it all gears back up for spring sports again, so...
Getting ready to introduce at least one new program for spring, so that'll be exciting.
Thank you, Strass.
Exciting for me.
Exciting for you. Yeah. We love youth recreation and adult sports.
Okay. Thank you. Destination Canal Winchester, Mr. Busker.
Thank you. Farmers Market, Saturday, November 1st, from 9:00 to noon at Stradly Park. And as Mr. Shea mentioned, the Reindeer Games, December 13th. 100% of the proceeds are going to Canal Winchester Human Services Adopt a Family, and the link is available on the Destination page. And I will make myself available after this meeting for anyone who needs help downloading the Canal Winchester app, so that you can make sure you're aware of all the dates that have been mentioned by all of us.
I really think they should make a commercial with you on it.
I don't see why they haven't.
I don't, yeah, realistically.
Facebook famous.
Thank you, Mr. Busker. CW Chamber of, what? CW Chamber of Commerce, Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. On behalf of the Canal Winchester Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to invite you to come join us on Saturday, this Saturday morning, for the Canal Winchester Wellness Fest, presented by Nationwide Children's and Dily Ridge Medical Center. The event is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Canal Winchester High School. The Ninth Annual Running Scared 5K has a few spots left. That'll be at the actual Wellness Fest. People from around Ohio, as well as Colorado, Arizona, and Pennsylvania, are participating this year. The health fair includes activities for all ages, including free fitness classes for adults and a bounce house and face painting for kids. We also want to welcome our newest member, Preserve Columbus. Sorry, I mispronounced that, but...
Are you giving high fives at the end like Mr. Busker did last year?
Yeah, free high fives.
Yes.
Free high fives.
Are you running a costume again?
I do not plan on it. I learned my lesson last year, so...
That was lesson learned, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Sustainability Commission, the next meeting will be Wednesday, November 5th, here in Council Chambers, 6:00 PM. 6:00. No additional updates to what I provided at our last meeting. Any other older new business this evening?
Just a quick question. Ms. Jackson, did I see the bed tax grant is open and ready for applications?
Yes, it is, and it will be open until December 1st, which is a Monday. Typically, we do November 30th, but since we're not here on Sunday, it will be open until 4:30 on December 1st.
So, for everybody out there, the bed tax grant is a great opportunity for you to fill out for money, potentially for your events, that are bringing people into our city or things that you have going on in the city that, and we don't get a lot of applications, so I always encourage residents to, there could be way more. There could be way more, that's all I'm saying. There's so many good things, and not as many applications as needed.
I think they cut everybody's funding last year to make room for everybody last year, just as a reminder.
It's the first year we've done that in forever.
Actually, I've been thinking about that, because as our bed tax pot grows, perhaps it's time for us as a body to revisit the amount, that grant money that we give, and perhaps up it a little bit. It's just food for thought.
Mine's $20,000 for painting a fire truck.
I'm good with the fire truck, Will.
I know. So, will the firefighters?
Applications are up till December 3rd.
Okay, so I just need to vote to amend the maximum allowed to be 20,000 instead of 2?
We can get the bumper painted for you.
Regardless, the opportunity is there. It's up until December 1st. I encourage people to apply.
This is run amok. Any other items for older new business?
My motion.
To adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Amos, second by Mr. Busker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call?
Ms. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Busker?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. Thank you. Time out. 8:20.